Start a little bit early because we had a guest that wanted to sneak on quick, so, Darren.
Thanks, Mr. Darren. Very informal. Darren Shaver with Marlin West. Just wanted to stop by and say happy holidays. Just have a little chocolate cookie story. Thanks to the pastor. I'll work with you again soon. That's all I got. Pretty quick and easy.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you.
So, the next item on the agenda will be the employee evaluation discussion for Commissioner Everly. Commissioner Everly, you're on the floor.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to say, I don't know if you guys know, but we lost our road supervisor down there south of Abe. David Crum. I guess he kind of just felt he was tired because of just chastising he got the last meeting we had with him. I guess I don't think that's right, what we did to him. He chastised us pretty hard, and in my opinion, I don't think it was his fault at all. I think that the road supervisor, it should've landed more on him because I think in any business, you know, they would go to the road supervisor or supervisor for what happened there. But, you know, David did the right thing by going asking his road supervisor if he could take that play at home. I think, like I said, in most businesses, he probably allows something like that. And he approved it, so should've landed more on the road supervisor. But, on David's behalf, I know he took responsibility for it all, which he didn't have to do. But, he did it anyway just because that's the type of person he is, I think. I feel bad that we lost him. I hope he would consider about coming back, but I don't know if that's possible or not. I think most of you guys are from Southern Innes County, and I think most of you agree that he did a good job, an excellent job down there for us, and I just feel bad about that. Like I said, I said, "Should've probably landed more on the road supervisor." And on his defense, it was all in the handbook that that was allowed, so I don't think there's any reason that could've been done. In calling a special meeting for that, I think that was around two. It could've been, that could've been done in a regular meeting where we just could've talked about it and say, "We're not going to no longer do this." But, we didn't do that, so that's the way that happened, so, I don't know. I think like in any business, like Dwayne, you've got a business out there. Wouldn't it be your responsibility if somebody asks you to use something?
Generally, anything that I approve is my responsibility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and I think what we did today with their, you know, cutting his wage, and, you know, and I want to apologize for that too because I don't think, I don't think, I'm the one that made the motion to give him a decrease in his wage. And I don't think that should ever really been because he didn't really do anything wrong. He asked for permission and everything, so I think, I think he was in the right there. And we should've just never, ever done that if we did, so. Anyway, I just wrote down a few things here that I just, like I said, putting him on probation and stuff, I don't think we should've ever done that. So, I don't know if David ever considered about coming back or not, but I don't know what the rest of you guys think, but I just feel that we did him wrong, and I think we all want to apologize. The commissioners, and I for one would like to apologize to them. I don't know what you other guys think, but that's what I feel. And I just think, you know, this happened, this was kind of stupid because I think there's just a few people that wanted to cause trouble for David. I don't know if it was because of jealousy or what it was, but in my opinion, they got their job done, and I just think it was wrong. And I just, going on to whatever, you know, we got another employee that padded his time card for years, got away with a lot of money, and don't want to deal with that. Nobody wants to say anything about that. So, I just, I just feel, you know, to be fair, to be fair, we should bring it up and discuss it. It should be discussed, no matter what happens. It should be, people should know what's going on. I think, you know, we want to be transparent. That's, you know, that's kind of what you ran on, the right being transparent. People should know what's going on, I think. And, I don't know. It's just how I feel with that. And I guess what I did was I had called Marla's and I requested open records on Al's time sheet. He's from like seventeen to nineteen. And I was just going through it, and I'm like, "Wow, he's got a lot of overtime. How, you know, how is that all possible?" Until then, I don't know if you guys went through those summary sheets that the old road supervisors, Francis, gave us. If you'd looked through them, we're not how that was all done. But, when I looked through Al's time sheets, "Well, he's got a lot of overtime," so I was kind of checking that out. Well, how did he, how did that all come about? And then I, he's got, he never puts his start type, or start times and stop times in any of his time sheets. So, but then I had called Francis and asked him how he did it because in that summary piece where he came up with all that, that's information when he took it. Well, then he explained to me how he did that. And he's got a, he put everything down on the spreadsheet. So, this is Al's own handwriting, own work that he put down. And it's all put on a spreadsheet and tells you exactly what happened, what, where the money went, and everything else. So, I mean, I think Al wouldn't even be surprised if he looked at this time sheet. I mean, in that whole thing, there were six hundred in the last three years, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. When Marla's pulled the records, I think they forgot a couple of months in there that were missing out on there. But, in those total years, there were six hundred and fifty-seven hours of overtime. And at thirty dollars an hour, that's nineteen thousand some dollars. So, some of this is legitimate, though. But, then you go back, you know, to the days he worked, there were seven hundred and ten days he worked altogether. Out of those days, there were some vacation days, seventy-four days. So, the number of days he actually worked was three hundred, or six hundred and thirty-six days in those three years. And he had overtime hours of three hundred and thirty-seven in those days, over half of those days. So, he actually had an extra, in those three years, without those extra two months in there, he had an extra fifty-three minutes a day that he took. That's uncommon. So, how is that possible? So, then when you look at his time sheet here, where he's got this all laid out here, it's kind of, Francis did an excellent job with this, and it's got, it's got here like, he's got it all color-coded here. But, it shows the days he worked, the days he took off. It shows the days, on a Wednesday, he must've took off a lot of time on Wednesdays, so his hours were short. So, what it looks like he did is he went back and he took, he worked an extra half hour every day of the week to make up for a little bit of time he took off. So, at the end of the day, end of the week, he always had over, over the hours he was supposed to, like three hours, four hours, five hours. That's where he got all that extra time, I mean. So, and then in the handbook, it says, you know, you can't start five minutes before work, and you got five minutes after work. You can't, that's where your stop time is. So, how did these extra hours all come about? That's what I want to know. And Al should have the chance to come in and prove himself if he wants to. But, I mean, it's all right here, and that one time, we had Al in and talked to him, and he said, "Yeah, he can." I mean, he still gets the chance to come in and go through this. Time sheets are all right here. This is all right here. I'm sure he could use this. And he could sit down, maybe he can get the HR person Pam Binder down here, and he can sit down and see us, tell us where these, all these hours came from. And, I don't know. That's a lot of money, in my opinion. And I guess I feel, you know, we're talking, and that's, that's only these three years. We're not talking the other years that Francis worked. There was some money going there, too. Francis was in charge of that at that time, but some of that's still got to buy. I think there was another four thousand dollars, am I correct, in that, right, Francis, something like that?
It's low, between one and three thousand.
So, we just let that go? I don't think that's right. I think that's way wrong. I mean, some people, "Well, that's not stealing. That's not that much." Yeah. He never opened up a drawer and pulled money out of the cash register. But, what he's doing here is, that is, in my opinion, that's still stealing. So, I don't think that's right at all. I mean, we're talking a lot of money. We're talking almost, you know, if there was nineteen thousand dollars overtime the first time, let's say there's even a third of that. Let's say there's fifteen thousand dollars he got away. Fifteen thousand dollars times, how many employees are in the courthouse? Thirty? So, thirty employees in the courthouse, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do you think it would be okay if we all, if we cut a check to the rest of the workers for fifteen thousand dollars each? What would the taxpayers say? Would they be okay with that? I don't think so. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, but I just, I feel that's, I feel that's wrong. And I guess I just, Al never came in. He never apologized for anything. He never said he was sorry. He never tried to make restitution or anything. And I know we can't prove the exact dollar amount. I mean, he could come in and say what he did if he wanted to and try to prove anything, but no matter if it's five hundred dollars or whatever it is. If Marla's took five hundred dollars or a dollar, Gary Sanders would be hung in her business. And here we do. We just let it go? Well, that's a little, that's, we just got to let that go? I don't think so. I, in my opinion, not. I mean, that's right, that's right. We want to crucify one guy. David Crum for taking a blade home, which he never did anything wrong, really. And he was a good asset to the company, or to the, to us here. And we just chastise him and send him down the road? I mean, he, how do you think he feels? I mean, we paraded him out in front of a bunch of people, which was never called for. We never should've done that. And I just think that's wrong. Then we got another guy that steals money, in my opinion, and we're just going to let that go? You just move on? Don't worry about it? That's under the bridge? I don't think so, in my opinion. I mean, I can't make no decision here by myself, but I would hope we do the right thing for the taxpayer. That's our job. Doesn't matter what time of year it is, is election year or not. I know this got pushed off. But, our job is to do what's right for the people of the county. And if somebody's stealing from me, and I'm a tight chairman, he took, in my opinion, he took money from me, too. It's all our people's money. So, he took money out of my pocket, too, and I don't like that. And the other thing, some of this is federal money. So, this could be a federal offense. So, I don't know what you, what you guys think about it, or what you want to do about it, but that's, that's just how I feel. That's why I wanted to bring it up. It's bothered me for a long time. I have nothing personally against Al, or Gary, or Dan here, but it's just, you know, you guys are family, and I understand. Your side, you don't want to, you know, your brother and stuff, you don't want to get him in trouble. It's, it's nothing personal. It's just the idea, the fact, that these people are taxpayers, and it's their money. It's not our money. We gotta, we gotta protect their money and spend their money wisely. And if somebody's stealing our money, taking our money, we gotta do something about it. I don't know. That's what I think now. And I think that, like I said, I think we should be transparent. I mean, that's, like I said, that's what we ran on, too. We ought to be honest with people and let them see what we're doing. And it doesn't matter what, what, what I think or what I feel, but I just, that's something I think we should do. We have to let the taxpayers know what's going on. If nothing gets done, well, nothing gets done. But, at least the taxpayers should know what happened. And I don't know. So, I think we should do something that this never, ever happens again. I mean, how does this, how did this ever happen? I mean, even under Francis, how did, how did it happen? I mean, it's on the honor system. He writes down his time, so if you have somebody that's not honest with you, is he going to change his ways? Can you, if you're always dishonest, are you going to be able to change that? I don't know. But, I just, you know, that's what we did. It was on the honor system. So, I think from now on, if there's anything over, like, they're scheduled to work fifty hours, and somebody has to work fifty-three hours or fifty-two hours. Well, then there should be something written down, "Well, here's what I had to do for those three hours," and bring it in, and when we have a meeting, it should be brought in front of the board. I mean, maybe that's a lot of work, but that's the way it should be. Just to get away with this kind of money and not, nobody see it or nobody do anything. And I know we never caught it a long time ago. This was going on for years. But, you know, we caught it now, and we have to deal with it now. So, I don't know. That's how I, that's how I feel, I guess. I think, I don't know what we can do about it. I know, I know Pam Binder had said, "Well, if this employee was anyplace else, he probably wouldn't be here anymore because of the situation, but we probably can't fire him for this thing just because of the time span that happened." But, we could've fired him for anything else, and there's still a few issues that we can deal with that he did. I mean, there's always a little bit of trouble out there. That last time when we didn't give him a raise because he blocked somebody in, we didn't give him a full raise. What did he do? He got mad and chastised the other people out there and made it tough for them. "Why did I get, why did you guys, what, how come you guys got that?" I mean, that should've never happened either. So, could've been firing him that day. And then there was that other thing where he ran down the road after that truck and tried to stop a truck, and what the hell? Who see? I mean, we have an employee that runs after a county or a truck and tries to stop him and says, "You can't be on this truck." I mean, I don't think that's right. I mean, what if something would've happened? What if somebody rode a rear end with him? Is the county liable for that, huh? I mean, he could be fired for that. We never dealt with any of that. So, I don't know. That all kind of bothers me. And then like, hey, then we say, now we give out raises. He wants a raise. Well, you and you worked together, and I know you took twenty thousand dollars, and I get the same raise you get? I don't think that's fair. How can that be fair? How could, I mean, there's, that causes friction amongst all the employees out there. One guy gets a bunch of money, and, and he gets the same raise as I do. Well, why should I be fair then? I'm going to write extra time in my time chart, too, you know? That's just how all that goes. And I just, I don't know. I hate to say it, but I think this guy should be gone. I think of the taxpayers, too. A lot of them say, "Well, how come this guy's still around?" Yeah, I don't know. He's still there. I don't care how good an employee is. I mean, even like David Crum, he was an excellent employee. Yep, we're going to fire him. We should fight, we should fire him. We should resign. Well, what for? What did he do? He never did, he never stole from the company. He did more for this commission than any of us ever did, in my opinion. He takes pride in what he does. He's an excellent employee. He might be stubborn sometimes, but that's, everybody's got their own personalities. That's okay. But, I mean, you know, I mean, he never did anything. He always tried to do what's best for the county. He took pride in everything he did. And now here we chastise him. Now, well, you know what? He doesn't have to put up with that stuff, and I don't blame him. He doesn't have to put up with that. Somebody chastises, following him around all the time, make sure he doesn't smoke a cigarette in the blade or whatever he wants, that does, you know? And I just, then the other guy does the other thing. He's always causing trouble out there. Well, he's the one that should be fired. So, that's, that's what I have to say. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say or would like to say anything, but all I know is we lost a good road supervisor, or road maintainer down our way. And I worked hard to get David to come on. I, I told him this would be a better place to work and everything else, and now he took the job, and now, now he's gone already. Now, I got nothing down there. We had a good one down there. I think everybody liked him down there. I don't see anybody, I don't know anybody that didn't like him. I mean, he pulled up all those roads. How many roads did you pull up there?
I pulled Kirby Gutter, a hundred and fifty-five miles out of a hundred and sixty-five on my route. And then I rebuilt, totally rebuilt, three miles on eighty-eight, three miles on Ninth Avenue, two miles on Eighty-Ninth, and two miles on Ninety-Eight.
Okay, so he did all that work for the county, more than the other guys pull up roads, because David loves to do that. And now we lose him. And all we heard last summer was, "On Ninety-Eighth Street, where Don Everly's girlfriend lives, why is he pulling up that road? Why is he doing all that work? Why is that?" You didn't hear it on all the uproads he pulled up. It's just because somebody wanted to cause trouble. And I just, well, they got their job done, but I just feel this is wrong here, too. This is, this is way more wrong than, than anything David ever did. That's what I have to say, and I hope, I hope we as commissioners do the right thing. I know taxpayers found out about what is all going on here. I know there's a few that know, but a lot of taxpayers will know what happened here. They'll wonder the same thing. Why is this guy still there? It's like I said, I have nothing personally against Al or anything. It's just, what's right is right, what's wrong is wrong. That's what I have to say, unless anybody else has anything to say. Any commissioners that you can say? So, what do you think we should do about it? Ask commissioners. I know we can't fire him for, for his time sheet thing, but he could be fired for running down the road after a truck or chastising the other employees out there. And like I said, to me, I don't care how good an employee is, or if there's trouble out there all the time, or it's this kind of thing, that kind of thing, and can't trust a guy on an honor system. Well, then, I don't think he should be there, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, as far as it not happening again, I mean, one thing that I've reiterated over and over is we've done, I mean, we don't do this time card the same way. I mean, now you've got Skyler looks at him, he signs him. John Ibach looks at him again, he signs him. We review them, knowing what we're looking at. The auditor does, "Well, no, hold on, Donnie. Now, just, because you, you know, when you say things like, 'What happens from now on?' Well, what happens from now on is we're watching for it a lot harder than we used to. And if it happens again, then you know what's going on, and you do something about it. The other thing is, is we're also doing the automated clock-in system. We're working on it with, you know, John is working on it along with Skyler and them with Armor Interactive. We're trying to do like a clock-in system, which I think is the right way to do it. The honor system may have worked in the past, but it doesn't work now. So, I mean, we've addressed the issues, and we're moving forward with it. The other thing about it is, you want to bring up David Crum's situation, you want to lay the blame on the supervisor. You didn't mention a one time during these time card incidences that the supervisor was signing off on him. The commissioners were reading them. The auditor was paying the bill. We all know the hand-to-hand book as well.
That's what I said, even with Francis on there. He still got away, he still got away with some time.
Right, but I can tell you, when I first got on the commission practice.
It was way different.
Was always Nick called guys in for overtime for whatever reason. He usually called the Litten guys because they were close to the shop. Whether that's right, wrong, or indifferent, those guys always got extra overtime either. Was it right or wrong? Probably not. Did they get preference over other guys? Yeah, probably. And I didn't like that system either, but even when we were at an ice jams and everything, he called the Litten guys. And them guys got massive amounts of overtime for a weekend or two. There was all kinds of times that happened.
Okay, that's a good example. You brought that up. Ice jams. We went through Al's records here in the last three years there. He spent, it was two days. He had written down where he worked in ice jams. So, what's that for a time? Not sure of the amount to nineteen thousand dollars for the overtime.
Yeah, but it wasn't just, I'm not saying ice jams racked up a lot of dollars for overtime, but that was a scenario where the policy at that time was the superintendent picked his guys to go and do their overtime. If someone needed to do something in an emergency, it was always one of probably two or three people. And I'm not saying that was right.
The thing I noticed here with Al, when he worked out on his own, all the grading and everything he did, he always had overtime. He's always had overtime, every day. But, when he had to work with other people in the shop, in the shop, he always had his ten hours in. That's all he put in. But, every time he worked on his own anywhere, he has all his extra overtime. And every time, it's ten and a half, ten and a half, ten and a half. Why not, why is it ten and a half? Why is it ten hours and ten minutes, fifteen minutes? Did he round it off to a half hour every time?
Right. I don't know, and neither do you. That's the whole point of the conversation that we're having, though, is the, the system was a mess. There were all kinds of road things going on, and we've, since then, the supervisors changed. Couple of the other employees that were accused of this have quit. We've changed the way we do the time cards. We're doing the clock-in system, which is hopefully going to be running sometime in the spring, summer. I know they tested it this summer, and they have a few things to fix. Now, we have a new road superintendent after the road superintendent that found this, who's aware of what's going on, who's watching it closer. We're all watching it closer on the time cards. Not saying to just ignore it, but we haven't ignored it. We fixed almost everything that can be done.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, we ignored the, what the money he got away with.
Yeah, but you don't know that, because that's the higher prux of the conversation, though.
Well, we know, we know.
When the supervisor's allowing that kind of an atmosphere, and that's what's going on, I mean, how can you just, you're just going to go ahead and put all the onus on the employee? But, in David's case, now the employee has no responsibility, and it's all the supervisor. Like, that's the part where we need to move forward. We recognize there's issues. These guys have all gotten dealt the same way. It's typically probation and a pay restriction. Nobody got picked on any more than the other person. Now, have we gotten stricter over the last year and a half, two years, three years? Sure. I, it was my first term as commissioner. From one year to the next, I get stricter and lighter on things as I get educated on them. You know, but to rehash issues over and over and over on some of this stuff is not.
We never rehashed any of these issues over. We never rehashed this over.
Yeah, we've talked about it multiple times. We haven't had just a moment like this meeting where we're bringing it out loud, but we all agreed that we had done a lot of fixing, and that things were better, and we're moving forward. I mean, you're going to go forward and just pick on every employee? Well, then we should audit every employee that's worked here over the last five years, and we should ask them to pay it back, too, because I'm sure it's not the only one.
I never asked them to pay it back, because we can't force them to pay it back. I never asked them to pay it back.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, what, what do you think we should do, being we know he took this much time? How is it fair to all the other employees? How is it fair to them?
Right, but how is it fair to the employee that you're naming right now, and we don't even know for a fact how much money he was even missing? Or even if, I mean, we already admitted that the system was a mess.
I'm not saying, like I said, I know he didn't probably take the whole nineteen thousand dollars or more, but there's a lot of it that can be justified that he did take. I don't care if it's a dollar. Like I said, I don't care if Marla's took a dollar. It's a dollar. And, you know what? Just to blow it away and say, "Well, you know what? We're just going to start over now. If we're going to do that, then we should give each one of the employees fifteen thousand dollars and say..."
Well, you can do that, because you don't know how much is gone. I keep reiterating that. Was it four thousand, is it fifteen thousand, is it six thousand, is it twenty-five thousand?
Okay, let's just settle for ten thousand. It's got to be at least ten thousand.
Settle for ten thousand. That's fair. That's nice. I don't.
Well, I just, I just feel, I guess I...
I don't disagree with you that it needs to be brought out in the open. I got no problem with that, but I feel like we've addressed all the situations. And if it happens going forward, then you handle it as something that's happened going forward.
Okay, so what are we going to do with this employee? What should we do with him?
We'll make a motion to do something. I don't know what to tell you. You're, I mean, you're just as in charge as the rest of us in this room.
Well, I'm just saying, why should, you know, we never, we never made a motion before to do anything when we dealt with David Crum. We want to get rid of him right away.
Well, we didn't get rid of him right away. We didn't want to.
Well, thank goodness we didn't, but I mean, it made enough impact on him that he, you know, decided to quit, because you know what? I don't have to take up, I don't have to put up with all this crap, which I, I don't blame anyone else. But, it's just like, then the other guy, we don't say nothing. We're not even going to, maybe we should, maybe we should fire him. Maybe we, maybe we shouldn't get the raise the rest of his, how many years he works yet, to try to compensate for this.
Well, make the motion if you want it done. I don't, I mean, that's, I don't know what else to tell you about it, Don. I mean, I...
Well, I would make the motion that we fire him on the grounds that he ran after the truck, and he chastised the employees out the shop. That's going to be my motion.
Well, Commissioner Everly's made a motion to terminate Al, Al Home on the grounds that he chased after a truck in an incident, and then multiple other incidences, I guess. That's the motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Not hearing any. The motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, maybe I'll make another motion. A motion that he doesn't get a, if we keep him on, a motion that he doesn't get a raise for two years. And if he's on probation for two years.
So, Commissioner Everly makes the motion that Al Home is not eligible for a raise and is on probation for a time period of two years. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Not hearing any. The motion dies for lack of a second. Is that it?
Um, I don't know. What other motion could I make?
Yes, indeed, I, I don't know.
Okay, well, anyway, if that's the way you guys feel, that's the way you feel, but, um, I guess at least I feel I did my part. I feel I should, uh, you know, it's bothering me and I thought this is the right thing to do and if that's the way you guys feel, that's the way you feel. I don't think this is right, but...
I don't want to interrupt you there, Donnie, but, uh, I don't know if you wanted to make a motion to rescind whatever action was taken on, uh, again, Steve Crum, because you brought that up earlier too, or are we not gonna make any motions on that? I mean, I know he's, he, he quit, but if he, he could still rescind the motion.
Yeah, I could rescind that motion. I would like to rescind that motion.
So you would like to rescind the motion that we placed David Crum on probation and pay restriction for one year?
Yeah, and I would like to, I don't know, we can ask David, would you, would you, would you work at for another couple of years or something? Would you be willing to come back? I mean, I mean, not that you have to answer that right now, you give some thought, but I would, I would, I think all these people in this room would gladly have you back or want you back. And I guess, you know, if you get your same pay raise as everybody else. I, for one, would like to apologize. Like I said, sincerely apologize for what happened.
Commissioner Everly, I respect what you've done to it. I respect what you've tried to do. At this point, I, I'm not prepared to give you an answer right now, Commissioner Everly. It depends how the commission votes. I would give it consideration, but that's the only answer I can give you to answer it.
Okay. But what's pertaining to what? What do you mean by how we vote?
I, I heard that you were gonna make a motion to remove my pay restriction and probation.
Well, Commissioner Everly rescinded that motion, but I don't even know how that works. I mean, you rescind a motion that's already passed? I mean, we would have to vote to rescind it? Is that what you're basically saying?
Right, yeah, you did, because it's, it's board passed it, not just Commissioner Everly. He's making the motion. If there was a second, would you guys vote?
So he's making the motion to rescind the motion? So the motion's been made to, been made to rescind the motion that David Crum was placed on probation and pay restriction for one year? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Not hearing any. The motion dies for lack of a second?
Okay, so I guess, um, we just lost the best playdough we had in our part of the company. You guys feel that was right? Whatever. I think it was a mistake.
Commissioner Everly?
Yeah?
I'm part of hearing, so I'm assuming that, uh, the motion was to keep me on pay restriction and probation? Well, I can tell you my answer. If you called and want me to come back, you don't have to guess what it's gonna be, Mr. Everly.
Yeah, I'm sorry, David.
It's not your fault, Mr. Everly.
Yeah, well, I know, but I mean, I just, I just, like I said, I know we had the best opera, we had everything down there for... And now we, now we lost it.
So, I mean, but that's what you want to talk about though? I know you want to talk about if somebody gets out of line and we punish them and they quit and they have all the hostages though? Is that kind of what you're getting at? I mean, is now we're supposed to, we're supposed to rethink stuff two, three weeks later and then, then pass up on it?
No, I never said that.
Well, I mean, that's kind of what you're getting at though. I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just tell you, it's frustrating me a little bit. I have no regrets about what we did. Do I, do we have regrets that it happened? Absolutely. Do you think anybody enjoyed being in here on that day and doing that? No.
You should.
But, but to, to act like all of a sudden after the fact, we're gonna go and just act like it never happened because, because the guy that we didn't terminate quit now.
What do you mean, didn't happen?
No, you want to act like what happened didn't happen. Like, you want to rescind the motion, you want to go back like everything, we want to ignore the fact that something happened that we were in conflict in, we made a decision as a group and that's the decision we made. And now all of a sudden, after he retires, because, you know, we didn't let him off the hook and we didn't fire him, we punished him and we felt accordingly and he retired because of it, which is fine. I respect that. I have no problems with it. I topped the day that after I heard he was retiring, but, but now that he retired and we didn't want him to, now we're just gonna go ahead and be like, oh, no, no, that's okay. We don't need it now. We met as a group. That was a reason to a special meeting.
I never said nothing was not meant or not. Well, it sure never meant a special meeting, in my opinion.
Well, why not? So, I mean, we're not supposed to, we're, we're supposed to have a special meeting after lunch here and talk about time cards and everything, but we're not supposed to have a special meeting when an employee takes a piece of equipment that he probably shouldn't have? I mean, there's no disagreement that the majority of this group felt that it probably shouldn't have done. I know you disagree with it and that's fine, but...
Okay, well, that's, okay, then you say that, but now we have another employee taking once a money. We shouldn't have, we should have had a special meeting about that the day we found out about it.
Yeah, well, why didn't, we didn't do a lot of things that we didn't do. And now we're supposed to go back in time and we're supposed to fix everything. We're supposed to go back and get...
I never said we're supposed to fix anything. The only thing with Dave there is that, you know, if, if, maybe, why rescinded this is because maybe he would come back again and, and work for us some more.
Right, so you want to bring a guy back that retired because he felt like he was mistreated? You want to bring him back and act like everything's gonna be fine too? And then, and then what? We're supposed to be respected as a board for not handling things and then handling them and then not? I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm not happy what happened, happened. I'm not happy that David retired. I like David. I think David does an excellent job for us. I'm a David Crum fan. But I'm not gonna go tippy-toeing around everything all the time and act like because some guy's gonna get mad, that's why I don't want to do things. We address problems as they become a problem and we do the best we can to handle them. And that's, that's how we handle them, so, I mean, you know, I mean, you can apologize to David if you want. I'm not gonna apologize. Whether I'm happy or not, well, I mean, whether we're happy about it or not, that's the decision that got made in the situation we had with the information we had.
You don't have to apologize. I said, I want to apologize.
Yeah, but you felt like the rest of us should apologize to you.
No, I said, I said, I don't know what the rest of the commissioners think, what you guys feel, but I said, as me, I would like to apologize to David. But I mean, that's just mine.
I mean, the big problem I have with all these situations we're talking about with these employees is that nobody seems to want to declare their conflicts of interest with this stuff.
Well, yeah, we got it right here.
Yeah, well, yeah, but you're no different with David Crum too. He's a good friend of yours and you're advocating for him. And these guys advocate for this guy and this guy.
David's not a good friend of mine. I never, I, I don't really know David, just like I don't know Al very much. I know David and Francis a little better than maybe Al, but it's not like we go out and hang out and talk every day. I, how many times I ever talk to you this year, David? Once or twice?
Maybe. No, but everything, everything we've done, we've done basically according to the handbook to the best of our abilities. Now, it might not get done as good as one person or the other, but we handle these things and then they're done. I mean, like I said, we handled the situation. You've made your motions now. You've brought it to light. We've may have had our issues with time cards and done all these things and, and I think it's time that we just move forward with it.
Okay, it's done now? We voted on it? The way it is, it's the way it is? Fair enough. Am I gonna do it?
Yeah, it's the way it is. Anybody else have anything to add? Hope there's no more business before the board, as we entertain more to adjourn. Well, we got, it's pretty good. No, we do have to do the bills done. Never mind, we're not adjourned. Okay? Well, that's the end of the items on the agenda, so I guess bring on the bills. I just reminded myself of one other thing here, is probably should have been a part of old business, so we did the work up at the Hazelton shop. Spray foaming and all the, and the metal and all that stuff. Skyler contacted me on moving the toilet and stuff, because now the toilet's actually outside of the bathroom where they wanted to move the bathroom. So, he asked me for, I got it as a quotation, but as an estimate. I wanted to bring it before the board because as a board member, I'm declaring a conflict of interest. If you guys want to allow me to do the work, I will do it, but, so what it would be, would be to cut a path from the current toilet into the bathroom where we're gonna agree, we're gonna cut through the cement, and we have to bust it out, lay the pipe in for the sink and toilet, and then we'd probably run the water line in the floor too. That way we don't have to go overhead and try and fit it in the walls or anything like that, so it'd be pretty easy to do since it's inside a heated area. So it would be either cutting the concrete, busting it out, shovel in the dirt, laying the pipe, and then pouring the concrete back in and all that, so... The reason my estimate is so high is I have no clue what's in that concrete. It could be mesh, it could be rebar, it could be nothing.
Do you technically, by law, have to give a second or third bid?
I don't think so because I think we're under the amount. I know when I've done work before, when the commissioners agreed to it, I think the limit's like, it's like a hundred thousand dollars or something. You have to get a bid or something, so... It's well under the requirements. I just know, being a commissioner, I don't think it's right that I just, Skyler called me and I just go through it and said you guys bill. So traditionally, what's happened is, if you guys want to get another quote, I have no problem with that. I wouldn't be offended. If you're fine with me doing the work and we want to do it out in the open, I will not vote on it and the board, you can decide if you want to do it. I have an estimated amount of about, I think it's forty-three hundred and fifty dollars, but I don't think it'll be that high unless we run into six inches of concrete and some rebar or so. I...
So could you, you don't do that in the winter yet, huh?
Oh, yeah. No, this would be ideal to probably do in the next two to three weeks. But, um, I, I have a pretty sneaky suspicion it's gonna be relatively easy concrete. I don't think it's, because it doesn't seem like it's some huge built-up concrete. I don't know. I, I, what I would do is I'd basically do it on timing materials and I, I would, I would probably just take a guess that it'd probably be at least five thousand bucks cheaper than what I think it'll be, but I didn't want to quote that and then run into rebar and god knows what, because that shop's been a little bit of everything. It's been some really well-built things in there, it's been some really shoddy built things in there. I have no idea what that concrete is.
Do you need another commissioner there to verify and confirm what you're doing?
You want to take pictures? That's fine. I have an open ID, you know, because I got, I got two other guys. We could get on it. We'd probably get it done. And I, I feel like we'd get it done in two days, and if we got it done in two days, it'd be much cheaper than that. If it took us a third day, it's because things probably went bad.
And your lines probably aren't deep, but I probably just gotta...
Well, no, I mean, we're going, we'd be going roughly about twenty feet over, so we'd have to get down a little bit, but underneath that toilet, um, because I set the new toilet when we did all that, and I poured concrete where there, see what they did was originally plumbing was left out. They didn't pour concrete there, so I never actually messed with any concrete when I helped set the toilet and stuff that time. But, uh, that pipe is about three feet down, so we should easily have enough room to dig down, cut towards a little bit. It's really not a big project unless the concrete for some reason is just amazing and it takes a lot, but I'm anticipating be able to cut it, bust it in, dig it out in one day, probably pipe it and pour the concrete back in the second day. And I think it would be probably a lot more reasonable, but I kind of gave it the worst-case scenario because I have no clue what that concrete would be like, so... That being said, I just wanted to bring it forward because I have no problem if you wanted to get another quote. If you're fine with me doing it, I'm gonna abstain for conflict of interest, but I know Skyler kinda wanted the decision made soon so we could get that bathroom up and running, so...
Do we need a motion over there?
And, excuse me, but before we vote on it, we want to add, we want to bring a water line out to the front of the shop too, so...
Well, I think, yeah, that, something like that, it probably isn't gonna be too big of a deal, I think.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's gonna...
Because we're doing some water line work anyway, so I think that, uh, would, I probably wouldn't change my price really heavily at all, so...
That was the only add-on.
I think we should have a motion just for...
I'll make a motion.
For the sake of it. I just, I, that's the way we've done it in the past and I like it that way.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with Mr. Magrum's, uh, bid there.
So Commissioner Holm makes a motion to, uh, accept the quote by Magrum excavating to do the work at the Hazelton shop, seconded by Commissioner Maiteri. David walked out.
Should I have that bid then?
Oh, no, David walked out.
Can I have that bid?
What's that?
Yeah.
Where, by the way, where is their shop located?
Who's shop?
David Crum.
It's right along the highway, on the north, north side.
Do you guys get bids, competitive bids?
You know where Don's auto body shop is at?
Yeah, we, yeah, we contact...
Green building with the screen, right, Kevin?
Get you forward, contact or... There's a county entity catching you or not? So you can pre-buy six hundred and ten thousand dollars in bats on diesel fuel.
Almost to the Senex point there.
Do you have to take delivery? Can I, I could, I could pre-buy and then I take delivery as I need it?
It's on the south side.
On the south side.
To try out smart cars, sometimes it needs an extra.
Yeah, we, if we would have, this year the market was a little volatile, so come figure out where we're not making that. We kind of try to play the market a little bit, like when we know we're getting closer, needing it, we start calling around and getting bids. It's every day.
You've never been in it either?
No. The other day, we just got a take...
Yeah, I was wondering where it was, but I'd never been in.
We got a price that night and then it changed the next day when the truck was in, bringing it in line and it's whatever, when the truck gets loaded and so... It's a gamble. You win some, you lose some, but this year, I think with the high-fuel cars and stuff, I think we did pretty well.
Hang on, guys, so we got that, we're still on that motion for the shop work, so...
Oh, that big shop?
Gary made the motion and Dan said it to...
There's that big shop, and then there's that restaurant.
Got any problems with that?
So it's just north of that restaurant? Uh, okay, now, yeah, that's the restaurant. Yeah, that's the restaurant.
Gary?
Yeah.
Gary, we're gonna vote on that. We're gonna vote on the quote here.
Oh, so you really don't look, it's here, right?
All those in favor?
You want to go and look outside of us? Are these bills here all itemized?
Yeah. All those in favor of doing the work at the Hazelton shop, Magrum excavating, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, I'm standing for conflict of interest.
Aye.
Commissioner Maiteri? Matt, abstaining from conflict of interest, okay?
The time sheet coming along, watching, making sure...
Motion passes, so...
The key initials off.
Courtney, with Skyler.
And I don't want to get into no conflict. I got this handbook handed to me last year and I never looked at the handbook prior to that. I sat down for two evenings and read the handbook. All the responsibility lies on him to approve the time cards on a current basis, on a daily or a weekly basis, what it's French and mine and your head, Al's and Skyler's head, to question these signs and initials of... I've talked to five people that run corporations that supervise. They've got from forty to eighty employees, and they said, once that's signed and initialed, it's a done deal and the payroll is done. They said, because you're a, and I'm not fending out, I'm just saying in general, when I worked different places because I busted my ass and took all the overtime possible and they granted it to me, I took it. And I would run day and a half, run time and a half over.
I know this should have been on more on the supervisors too. I mean, Al should have been a little more on the honor system.
And we can't prove that. That's the hell.
It can be kind of proved. There's a way more here than...
That's an assumption. That's an average.
Well, there's more, I mean, there's more there. If you, if you look at that spreadsheet...
I looked at a summary AMB that was mailed to me. I don't know who in the hell got it, how they got it, it come to me for...
Well, he got that from me.
That's what I figured. I took that and I'll be damn honest with you. I took that because it spooked me like a ghost. I don't want this shit. It's not my business. I went to the governor's office and they told me to get the hell rid of it.
Why?
They said, you don't want that.
But anyway, I mean, I...
This is, I'm just saying, as a commissioner, and you're the commissioner, and leave it in there.
Okay, well, that's fine.
And don't take it out there with the fans, because I'm not a fan follower. That's the way I am.
Well, I mean, that's all right.
You know what I'm saying?
You have to, you have to admit you're wrong with some of that stuff too.
Oh, I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent...
I'm just saying like this stuff down here, ninety-eight street rides.
I didn't grade them.
Some of that you did.
Well, you can say I did. And that was brought to my attention from various people. I didn't know a thing about it.
So why was it just that road? David pulled all of that road, and after they left that road, they went over to Westfield, they worked over there for two weeks or another. Do you hear anything there?
Southern Vandivers.
Yeah. Do you hear anything there?
I drove, I'm gonna tell you... I drove, I'm gonna tell you, Donnie, and nothing against you, Skylar, or anybody, I drove that road, I drove bean trucks for a day. That road is a son of a bitch to drive with that loose silk. And so narrow, you couldn't pass truck for truck. I ran for Lauren Van Horst and Lewis and the boys, and I said, holy shit, man. It's a power, it's like driving a flower. And I'm not criticizing you, but I said, this road would be a disaster.
And we've done more work to it since then, so...
You did some, so...
Put some gravel on it, we were hoping that Mother Nature would've cooperated with us, it rained a little bit.
Was it watered when you were building that? No.
Yeah, we were putting water to it, but, I mean, when it's that dry, I mean, water, and we couldn't...
The road, I thought, Skylar, don't get me wrong, is being a hard ass. I thought it was better, because I traveled that a lot when I farmed, a lot, and I said, holy shit.
We were hoping Mother Nature were, was gonna help us out on that road, but she just...
It wasn't your friend.
Just, no, she was not our friend at all this year.
And it'd be your enemy this spring if we get a wet spring like that this year.
Well, we get some moisture in there, we're gonna start rolling around and packing it back in there. We put some gravel on it, I, Mr. Vandavor's had called me a few times on it and we kept addressing it, but, I mean, it's just, that's the nature of the beast. I mean, if we could all predict the weather, I mean, we'd be, we wouldn't be working here, we'd be having multi-million dollar jobs somewhere else, but, I mean, that road will get better, and that road is built to our standard of twenty-four feet. Like, I get that is, I mean, the, why do you make roads, the more it takes to maintain them?
My, correct me if I'm wrong, but my thinking from years past, when I worked in the plants or wherever, their friend was a scraper, a paddle scraper, a belly scraper, to build roads, he said. They built that road from, what was, what's his name, Derek Schaefer built it with that, uh, engineering firm, when they built that road from Tom Oneider's south to the Farm and Market Road, and then on that mile going from the west coming to that, uh, wealth road, with excavators and side dumps and end dumps, you don't get it packed, and they had these, what do I'm gonna say, blisters in the road, Francis was there, and he said, Dan, I said, there's, there's blisters in these roads, just from, you don't pack it like you do with a belly scraper or a paddle scraper, where you're constantly dumping and packing, it's like building a signage pile.
Well, yeah, but you gotta have the right material too, I mean, that sandy material down there, I mean, you, everybody knows you can't get sand and pad.
But that's some of the best sort of matter, in that area.
Maybe for growing crops, but not for...
For crops, it's phenomenal.
Not for building roads, I mean, it's, and I mean, we can find it all, and this is...
But that's all behind us, it's just...
Yeah, I mean, it is, and this is not being, being, trying to be smart or anything like that, but...
I've never mentioned this after.
If you want that stuff, you guys kinda open your checkbooks and we'll let us buy some different equipment. I mean, we're, that road will get better, I was, I was hoping that Mother Nature was gonna help us a little bit. It just pounded out, sand, and it'll get better.
I said to the guys, I'm not driving truck again, won't you say, no, not on this road.
It'll, that road will get better, I mean...
So, then we were, we were to the east there, up there by the bore hill, to the east, where there's a cemetery on the hill on the highway, going eastern down to the Anaclay. And then you were moving north up to Andy Philm place.
Wouldn't that be over?
But that was a hot, that was a well-built road and it was, I mean, it's an old road, so we didn't have to drive it anymore. And those guys traveled that road a lot while party, uh, material, to that poly turmoil.
Well, lucky, like, veterans stay, they get eight hours.
Yeah, they get eight hours.
From those certain big operators.
Yeah.
Jim Vandavor's, Nick's Vandavor's.
Yeah, no, but still, they, yeah, I know, but still, you're doing... Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, this, this spring, we're just gonna work with it again, depending on how it goes and... They should be getting paid time and a half. It'll be, it'll get better, I guarantee that. Chem-electric, we did that, we got the, we got the holiday, plus the time and a half.
It's in our policy.
He's still working, I don't know.
Well, I'm just looking at it here, 'cause, you know, like David had fifty-six hours regular time, and it's in there, I never heard of fifty-six, it should be forty and anything over, overtime. And now she kinda explained it to me, which I totally don't agree with. Anything over forty hours should be overtime, you know, so David should've got sixteen...
Over forty or over eight?
Forty.
Over forty.
So, David should've got six, sixteen hours, thought he'd work a holiday, I just don't agree with that. You know, I mean, I, David's getting screwed in that deal, I don't agree with, that's what I'm saying.
For who?
But I don't know why their paycheck was so high this month. Is there anything on it, or something? Ninety-seven hundred. Is it, is that David Crumb's? They probably paid out his vacation time, whatever he has, his vacation, 'cause that's what they... On my, that's not my wheelhouse. They want to pay his vacation and everything, sickly?
Is that the book on those handbooks?
It must be.
That's your motto, isn't it? You gotta go back.
I know, but that's what I mean, I, I don't agree with it.
We gotta follow that handbook.
You gotta follow the handbook.
Right, I just don't agree with that system. I didn't know that's how they did it, I just don't agree with it. Is his vacation and sickly, everything on him then?
Dave?
David.
He didn't have much, um, he actually got paid, but he took some holiday, he took some vacation sick time.
How old is Dave?
Seven. 'Cause I was wondering, his paycheck was so high.
Sixty-eight? I don't think he's that age, is he? You believe me? I don't know how old he is.
How old is Dave? He's sixty...
No, I couldn't address that, we're still in a meeting.
Sixty-seven, eight. Six-six.
You can't, I can't ask people the age of a meeting, huh? No, I hate to say it, they still...
He was a good operator.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not...
I don't have nothing personal against Al, I just, I don't know if you guys get what I'm talking about.
Well, I, I can see with your point, but at the same token, we don't know exactly what all went down.
Donnie, I, this is all I read, um, in this handbook here.
Well, I know what you're saying, if they, they sign off on it, they sign off, but we know, we know that some of the guys...
We don't, we, I don't, and I couldn't make it a, a reasonable, a rational, honest decision, I know you've got to refer to the integrity, transparency. I mean, I gotta go right here, Donnie, off of this.
Yeah, I, I know, I got the same thing right here, it says what you know, you gotta, yeah, you're, Gary, you gotta sign off and show that you can't start five minutes before and five minutes after, I know all that stuff.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, we know what happened.
We can't long for the accused for all the hours.
Well, we can't, that's why I say we couldn't fire him naturally.
Oh, so you get one or...
I know about it, and I blow a bothers other way.
But then you'll get the holiday.
And it's not because he's...
So, you're gonna, they, they did an eight-hour holiday and it just worth three hours, didn't it?
And even though...
It was in the fourth somewhere, the cousin.
That's why. Okay, that was a way in there, yeah.
No, no, he was, I wasn't driving.
Twice, you get twice, right.
That's the thing with this road, Donnie.
That wouldn't have been said, yeah.
Which one?
Ninety-eight street there, what I have to do.
Well, I never, I have no idea. I know that they're against, now they're taking pictures.
You call, you call all my neighbors.
No, I didn't call them.
Silver neighbors, silver neighbors.
I've talked to Donovan, if he knows anything about it, it's Kurt Vandavor's is the guy that can tell. He's the one that asked me coming down the town, and I didn't, and the night that Joe Long gave us the way of service, instead of calling him, I drove up to his place personally.
Who's?
Aaron Magrum's.
Oh, yeah, he said...
I drove up there to be utmost, over, 'cause I didn't, I wasn't on the fucking board, I had nothing to do with it.
Well, I didn't either, but those come down to you, well, when you came in that meeting, you said, well, how come you're really approaching them, that's Donovan's friend, I was like, why are you doing favors for him?
No, I didn't say that, Donnie.
Dan?
Donnie, I did not say that with those words.
What did you say?
I did not say that, you're totally wrong on that statement.
Okay, I'll give this to all engineers.
Okay, that's your saying, that's, you say, I say, they say, we say, it's all fucking bullshit.
That day we had a meeting down there, you came in and you were, why are they doing favors for...
All I asked is what's going on in ninety-eight street. He's the one that asked it.
Why are they doing favors for Don?
I didn't say favors. You were thinking it, but that isn't what was said.
I was not thinking that, that, that's what I heard.
It is, I remind you, the camera's still on until you adjourn.
Oh, okay.
No, they're not.
Oh, we have a little order.
You have to move on until you adjourn.
Oh, he hasn't adjourned, so this is all on him?
That's, hey, well, when he hits the hammer and he adjourns, that's...
So, did you purposely do that or what?
I didn't wanna interrupt earlier.
No, I didn't.
Well, I thought he hit, he adjourned.
That's fine.
No, I'm just, I'm just hoping you're good there.
I hope we can work together.
Right?
I do too.
Well, he said that, yeah. Yeah, he said it, oh, wait.
This is gone, this is gone.
I thought he adjourned, I thought he hit it.
I had to bring it up. Are you done now? Or Gary, I should say.
Hey, Skylar, do you guys eat chocolate out there?
Sorry, what's that?
Do you guys eat chocolate out there? Who wants to take this big bar of chocolate that Bart went and last brought him? Or do you want it?
I got diabetes, I have it.
Oh, yeah, you don't want it.
Take it out there and chow it down, you guys.
We need, uh...
Pardon me?
I think they're giving us one.
Oh, they're giving you one already? Well, then we'll keep it here for the court hours.
We need the chairman to, uh...
There's another one here, there's carton box, there's a bunch of stuff in there.
I had a big cut here.
Well, put it down, push it through.
You ever hear of it?
It's a little ancient, always, because...
A little spot, inside the spring. The heater, the dry skin, I have not, I think, I remember, too, it's all, I said, look at this, that's not the one. It's digging one, 'cause when you push, that skin is, you see it's fair. And then they go deep rightwards, if you stick that there.
Is he removed by his, is he a probation up in January or anything? Is John having probation up in January or something?
So, it's in January?
How, put it on the agenda?
It's like basins, well, it's not now, no, it's basins, well, some of your secular layer is skilled. And they go to the, the hole up on that big, to make sure the margins are clean, which, that was at eight, and then, and then they're clean. They cut a, a triangle up and down, so why, so you can't pull that skin together, or it'll end up like an uncle. And that's why they cut it, so it's not anymore.
Why'd they do that?
Huh?
Why'd they do that?
It's two weeks yesterday.
So, they got it?
Yeah, it's clean now, yeah, and it's from farming, it's what I do, I work sitting in a windshield all the time.
All right.
It'll get you. I got another spot right here, but that's nothing for now.
So, what do we got, where's everyone? Can we go? Is he gonna chair himself?
He can, I told you.
Yeah, he can go, they'll adjourn, you know. We're not, they're actually adjourned.
So, you're putting blaze out to dispatch them for snow or not really? Are they?
Yeah, they're all running their oats today.
Can you still cut roads with these, what do they call them, a pick edge? And throw that gravel and mix it with the snow to cut off these, uh, washways?
We're waiting for some warmer days now to try to mix that in there, but we don't, you can't plow with snow, we're supposed to pick the wood off of it. Most everybody's switched over to standard edges now, to plow the snow.
So, the pick blade will that cut and break these rocks?
I guess, what do you mean by pick?
What do they call them, a pick cut edge? They claim it cuts, uh, it cuts your frost, even, like, if these roads are packed south, this is going to South Dakota, they're cutting roads all day long.
Well, we have, um...
It's spelled with a P-I-K, am I right on that?
I guess, there's a lot of different cutting edge manufacturers and one will call it one thing, like, we have stinger bits that have little teeth, teeth on them and stuff like that. There are carbide tipped edge and they mix snow, or mix gravel and stuff like that, but...
Hi, Dave. Yeah, we'll, we'll adjourn here, I got, I got a cost at outside the restroom.
You're with me?
There's people in the hallway wanting to talk. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Meeting adjourned. There's people downstairs, still early.
Got him.